Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals, tonight's hearing. We will move it around for what was published before just so we can accommodate all the cases. And Mr. Hagelin has a couple of requirements from Zoom that he has to step out, but that's why we tried to rearrange him, so he'll be available and get them on the agenda. So, in tonight's meeting, I'd like to go over a few of the ground rules by which the board operates under. Three members of the zoning board of appeals in Gardner must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequences which they appeared in the public notice. We're under new obligation to maintain that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city will be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present will be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing. All members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed, and is recorded in the registry of deeds. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my left, Mr. Mel Cornet, to my right, Mr. Randy Hagelin, and then Mr. Antea, at the end of the table, will be sitting on certain cases. There's two of the cases I will be departing from, and Mr. Hagelin will take over his chair. This meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of the meeting? Okay, then I just ask if anybody has cell phones, please turn them off so they will not go on and interrupt the meeting as we're going forward. I'll give you a minute to turn them off. Okay. I apologize for the hoarseness in my voice. My doctor told me that I had COVID about two months ago, and he said this is a lingering remnant from COVID. He said it will go away. When? I don't know. So, I apologize for that. If you don't hear me, let me know. Okay, the first case tonight is very familiar to this board. They've been here, done some homework, got the papers in. So, it's an application for a multifamily on 63 Walnut Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel 27-22-20, located in General Residential 3, Zoning District, GR3, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, Table of Uses Number 5, Multifamily Dwelling of the City Code of Gardner. The code states that you must require a special permit from the zoning board. So, sir, you may begin, attorney? Oh, yes, I will mention, if you speak before the board, please state your name and address before speaking to the board.
Hello, everyone. Daniel Stroh, 21 Cedar Street, Worcester. So, there were two-
Your address is different now.
Um-
Good Norwich Street.
Also 60 Norwich Street. That's correct, yes.
That works. Okay, all right. Sure.
Yep. So, there were two outstanding issues following our last meeting. One of them was a site plan that would incorporate your feedback. There were two things here. You have already have copies of this, but I printed this bigger so you can see. So, we met with a city engineer, Mr. Robert Oliver, and he suggested a few things which we incorporated in the design. One was, you know, where the stone removal area is, we are actually going to dig that about a foot deeper and put a crushed stone so that when the snow melts, it's not going to go across the driveway. This is one of the observations. The other one, there's going to be a trench in the upward side here, north side, of crushed stone. The idea here being that, again, water coming from the back hill would actually make into the ground right away, and it's interrupted so that water does not go to the left because that's how the direction of the slope is.
Run it by me one more time.
This here, you see, it's a trench, but it's interrupted. It's not continuous, so water does not go this way.
So, where does it go?
Goes into ground. It's crushed stone.
Okay.
Okay. So, this is one of the-
How deep are the, did he have a recommendation, or did he, any guidance, or do you have any guidance on how this back trench infiltration, how deep it's going to be?
It's usually about a foot dip, or we, yeah, that's what we told him, but we didn't.
Okay.
He did not express concerns about the how deep that is.
Well, is there also a berm that's going to run across there, or is it-
Yep, he asked for a berm on the left side.
Excuse me, name and address for the record.
That's going to be on the left side here to-
The berm is along here.
You can actually see it on the plants.
That's where the berm is.
Yeah. I thought they were talking about one here also.
That's what he's talking about now.
So, yeah, the berm's going to go on the left side along the whole property line.
The question was whether it's, there's one-
He wants that removed from there.
Rob did, Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, yeah. He said, do not put the berm on the backside. He said, allow it just go into the trench. Because it kind of, it slopes backwards and to the left. So, it's going to go that way and then that way. So, he said to remove that berm just to slow its movement. If we funnel it down there, it might just hit too hard.
Roughly how, what's the difference in the altitude, as I say, against the building and the slope going back?
The slopes are in there.
Right here, there is an invitation. It's 12 to 18, about six inches difference between the front and the back.
Okay, about six inches?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it does say 72 up.
And then there is about 22 inches between right and left. So, that was the one item that we, oh, you, the other one was a, the other issue was the retaining wall. And we have a, again, I'm giving you some copies here, but we submitted this already. It's an authorized contract with the-
Let me just go on the file.
Okay. Summerling Builders, Patrick Haner, and he's going to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me again, other notarized, one that you guys requested, is the original?
The original.
Yeah, we took it at this point.
So, we think that those are the two last items that the board-
Maybe those are the two items that we were really focused on at the last meeting?
Did you, I didn't want to, we're completed before November 1st, 2023. Okay.
Again, we are late. We want to do it this summer.
Understandable. Question then related to that, I think you said starting August and ending in November. If the board is favorable and granting your special permit, when, how long do you think it would take to do renovations with inside of the building? How long are you looking?
We would like to say three to six months.
Six months?
Yeah, three to six months. It's not a huge renovation, but there are certain things that have to happen in order, inspections, so-
Sure, and materials crazy right now, too, still.
Yep, yep. We anticipate to be done by the end of the year.
So, if the board was so inclined and, again, considered this special permit and granting the special permit, you'd entertain, or you would be okay with the condition that the retaining wall and the drainage work and everything be done prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
I didn't see a note.
No, it's okay. Just one other item that I have the board, we'd like you to consider that we do have the construction contract here with the builders, that we'd like the signatures of the owners also in the contract, and also the building inspector.
Is that on your, you had a-
I'm your owner, my signature's on the contract. And the individual doing the work is the owner of the other one.
So, I need to see it, right?
Yeah, I'm going to go shootings.
I'm bringing a seat.
Yeah, I'm not worried about, I'm, okay, you've got the owners, then I want the building commissioner. And Mr. Hanula has signed this already, so I would like to see-
I would not recommend the city becoming a partner to this contract.
No, they're just signed, dated, and this is the contract everybody's working from.
Okay, that's what you mean. Same thing with his plan.
He's going to approve the building permit.
That's correct. So, just to boil it down, you did submit a plan here, so that has to be signed off by the contractor, if you have contractors, both yourselves and the building commissioner, and dated. You want to make sure that everybody's working from the same set of plans, which sometimes that doesn't always happen.
Yep.
And really, on your contract here, that will have the building commissioner or building inspector sign off and have this dated, the date he signs it.
Yeah, his is just a witness signature, just saying that he received it, that's all.
Now, did the city engineer give you any kind of documentation on your recommendations, or his recommendation?
I've got it here. Let me read it.
Yeah, we have that.
Good.
Okay, so before I do read this, I'm going to ask if any other questions from board members? I'm going to ask quickly if there are any questions from any abutters to this property, and not for or against. I'll take any questions on this property and try to get them answered. From the floor, there are no questions. So, at this time, I'll read a letter from, this is from Rob Oliver. Well, it's from me, but then this is a response from Bob Oliver, and says, "Good morning. I recently sat down with Mr. Ian Calusco and Mr. Shenard to go over their plans for 63 Walnut Street. They conveyed to me the board's concern with an existing drainage condition on the property. I am aware of this existing condition as the DPW installed a catch basin in Walnut Street a while back to collect the runoff from this property and neighboring properties. From my inspections of this site, it's evident that runoff and groundwater contribute to a swale ditch from the hillside adjacent to the subject property. This morning, with no precipitation, the swale was running," and says pictures attached, but it, okay, and you've got the pictures, I don't have them, and they're open for anybody to look. Pictures are attached. "The swale appears to collect flow from property to the rear of 63 Walnut Street, 63 Walnut Street, and finally 44 School Street, where it discharges into the catch basin. The applicants presented to me that they were not adding any new pavement or other impervious areas to the site as part of the project. To address snow storage and subsequent snow melt, they are proposing to remove an area of existing pavement, which will have the effect of reducing runoff from the rear parking area by a small amount. I offered two recommendations for them, to them, for their project. One, to provide some means of infiltration along the backside of the existing pavement, and two, use curbing along the adjacent property, 44 School Street, to direct the existing runoff to the catch basin at Walnut Street. These recommendations are meant to provide some relief to the existing condition, but not meant to be a solution. The sketch that the applicant submitted appears to incorporate these recommendations as well as the snow storage issue. As the existing conditions are remaining relatively the same, I do not believe that the issue will be going away. Please let me know if you have any further questions regards Rob Oliver, city engineer, city of Gardner." So, they pretty much, they addressed the concerns, and I think he was, you know, affronted that it's not going to go away, but it's going to be mitigated with the recommendations that are here. Okay, any further questions from board members?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you want to move forward to close this case in the hearing?
Yeah, proceed with the decision.
Okay, you get the recommendation. Second, Bill.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. And now we will proceed for a decision. Do I hear a motion to move on the application?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, the only discussion would be the conditions of having the sign off on the contract and following the recommendations in the plan submitted, and you'll stay true to that plan. Okay, all those in favor?
I think I'd like, you know, seeing the outside of the building here. I think he said he would, but granted, some of it's not his property, but, I mean, I think the exterior of the building, any debris or, you know-
It's included in the contract. It's included in-
Is it?
Yes.
It is.
It's part of the scope of work. He's going to clean that debris, too. Yeah, this was one of the, one of them. The last page here is scope of work. Let me put my glasses again.
I have that issue, too.
Number five.
Trees on rear, slope grade, smoothness, excess fill. It doesn't address, I mean, there's a picture of a tire, you know, debris. You know, I don't think it would hurt having it as a condition anyway.
I agree with you.
As a condition anyway, and then if it's in here, you've just taken that condition and given it to, you know, your contractor, too.
Okay, then put that condition in. I'd just like that one more now.
Exterior debris.
Again, we can only promise to do it on our own property.
Only on your own, understandable, yeah.
Absolutely.
I love, at the end, the completion of his project, that there'll be an inspection of the wall, the drain, drainage and side drainage before any occupancy permit is issued. They'll be in compliance.
Inspection by whom?
The building inspector.
Building commissioner. With the construction prior to issuance of it.
Okay.
I think I know what you mean, and it meant to address the gist of it is to, we want the work done prior to the issuance of any-
Any permits.
Certificate of occupancy, which is what we discussed.
Any other further questions, comments, or additions of conditions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All those in favor with the conditions as noted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All who oppose? No opposition, special permit granted with the conditions.
Thank you. I want to tell them how we have 14 days to write the decision, but I promise you, we'll get it done sooner than that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then after you get the written decision, you have to bring it, record it on your deed at the registry of deeds.
Yep.
I want to put this one in the official file. Could I put, receive?
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
Good night.
We went on for a long time.
Yeah.
It's been this since last October.
Okay, the next case before the board is going to be case 05/03/2023, special permit, Millennium Holding Group LLC, 73 Stewart Street. Parcel identification, M32/24/6, density relief to seven dwelling units. Agent or attorney, and I know this, Mr. Bombachi?
Yeah, right here. I think we would do this one.
There is, there's a letter in the file.
Yep.
I got a copy over here if you need it. We need to go in front of the department of, the planning department first before we come to you guys.
Okay. And what is happening here, Mr. Bombachi and his corporation, has decided to withdraw at this point, and he submitted a letter to the board on May 9th?
Anyone's here for it, I'm happy to talk to them. The other room have questions, but yeah, I come withdrawal.
Okay. May 9th, 2023, City of Gardner, Zoning Board of Appeals, City Hall Annex, Room 101, Gardner, Mass., regarding application for zoning relief, multifamily unit 73 Stewart Street. Dear Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals, I, Jonathan Bombachi, with Millennium Holding Group LLC, would like to withdraw the application without prejudice. We will strive to get what is needed on our end to align with the ZBA's timeline. Sincerely, Jonathan Bombachi, Millennium Holding Group LLC. Now, for those not familiar with the withdrawal without prejudice, what that means is that he can reapply anytime, once he gets all his paperwork and everything in order. If it did not include the term "without prejudice," then he would have a two-year waiting period before he could reapply. So, that's how he's doing it without prejudice, as he puts his package together.
Make a motion, we-
Approve it?
Approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval with the withdrawal without prejudice, granted.
Okay, thank you. If anyone was here for that, happy to talk to you guys in the other room, just to tell you what's going on, just in case people are embarrassed. You made the trip, happy day. Chat.
There goes half of our audience.
It only gets better.
Okay, the next case before the board is Kristoff Chardy of 20 Rock Street, build a two-unit condo with separate driveway entrance. That's case 04012023, special permit, and the representation will be by attorney Christine Tree, who has represented him numerous times as we're going forward. The floor is yours, attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we're here on a follow-up meeting after a site visit, and I did prepare a letter just addressing the concerns that had been raised at the last meeting.
I know David's on this case.
Yes, one moment, please. At this time, Mr. Hagelin is not part of this case. Mr. Antea will be sitting, and is the third member.
Okay. So, I did prepare a copy for each member of a letter just addressing the concerns that had been raised at the last meeting until now, and I have a copy.
Oh, go ahead.
For Ms. Negron. So, just to review, this is a request for two things. We are looking for a finding because this is a lot with adequate square footage, but inadequate frontage. It is about five feet short on the frontage. We are looking for confirmation that under the zoning ordinance, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, that is a buildable lot because it is grandfathered. That is a finding request. And we are looking for a special permit to install a second driveway. That is because we are looking to construct a two-unit condo and have driveways, one on Water Street, one on Rock Street, so that the residents of the property are experiencing life as if they were in a single-family residence for the most part. We think that's the, the manner of development that is most consonant with the rest of the neighborhood, and we think it will be best for two condo owners to coexist with each other. So, addressing some issues that had been brought up, there was a site visit, the owner was present, that was on April 27th. The owner, we did write up a written notice to each abutter. The owner delivered that so that the abutters had the opportunity to be present for that site visit. A change of use form, there was a question about the denial letter. I did get a call today from your brand-new building commissioner, and as he has been in, we submitted that on April 27th, but he has been in place since yesterday, and so has not had time to generate a denial letter. I'm just going to state that, again, I did not submit this as an appeal. I submitted it as a request for a finding, and for that reason, I do think it's possible for the board to proceed without the denial letter. I expect that it's going to just be a denial letter because one of our requests requires a special permit, and the other requires looking at the title history that I had given you. So, there were concerns raised by abutters on a number of different issues. Some of them we really can't address, like this should have been a park, or I should have gotten the opportunity to buy it, or the road should be wider. We really can't do anything about that. But we did look, the owner did address the issues of what the addresses were going to be with the city engineer. The city engineer assigns the address, and he says it's going to be two different addresses for the two units.
Are they on, one's on Rock Street and the other is Water Street?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what the addresses are definitely going to be now.
Correct, that's what Rob told me.
Yeah, so they'll be oriented towards the two driveway entrances.
Okay.
Okay. City trash pickup is determined by the board of health, and it makes the arrangement when there's a resident there. So, it's not something they're going to determine and set out for us now. It'll be when they're getting ready to do the certificate of occupancy. This is from the city engineer. And then the last issue as far as concerns was about snow removal. The owner did speak to the city engineer about the possibility of an easement being given to the city for snow removal and snow storage on Rock Street, and what the parameters of that might be. Dimensions were discussed, and the owner has incorporated those dimensions into the plan. That plan is attached. So, if you look at the plan, which is the first thing attached after the letter, on the Rock Street side, there is a rhombus that is marked as snow removal. That is according to the dimensions provided by the city engineer. And then, of course, added to the plan by Zaca Engineering. The easement would provide that the snow storage would not be a barrier to any claim of frontage on Rock Street. So, but the owner is willing to make that contribution to alleviate any snow removal conditions on the street. As far as status as a pre-existing non-conforming lot under the ordinance, we had an issue of the abutting lot at 25 Rock Street being co-owned at the time of adoption of the ordinance. And I presented at the last meeting the fact that there was an ANR plan that was approved by the planning board, and so the dimensions must have been okay because frontage is one of the requisite dimensions of a lot. I have gone back to the local history section of the public library. By the way, my first time in the public library, beautiful. What a beautiful building you guys have. So, she had stored the older edition of the ordinances. When I looked back, there has been no change in the frontage required in the district, but there was a provision, and after the map, there is a copy of the old dimensional table, and then on the back, I'm looking at section Roman Nubel Rule 4A, sub 5, and it states, "If there are two or more dwellings existing on a single lot that don't quite meet the requirements, it's okay to subdivide them in a way that is most, you know, inconfluent with the zoning- in confluence with the zoning ordinance. It does say special permit, this is not a current version, by the way. This is the old version, this provision does not exist in your current ordinance. Um, so it does say special permit and there isn't any on record, but there all, wasn't always one on record, especially when the se- the separation of ownership occurred as a result of the IRS, um, taking the property and auctioning it off. Um, so I would say that this was allowable under the zoning ordinance at the time. Um, in addition, the twenty-five Rock Street, if you turn back to the map, it's the property that abuts on the very end of Rock Street. So its frontage is that little end of Rock Street. Um, and what it shares is, um, a, a short, I, I think about, about sixty feet that is not frontage. Even if you added that end of the street back in, which is about twenty-four feet, you wouldn't have sufficient frontage on Rock Street. So its separation just continued the fact that it was non-conforming. Um, when, uh, you look at your ordinance on what is a non-conforming lot, it says it's not held in common ownership with an abutting lot that is available for use. And so I don't think, because that frontage didn't make this conforming, I don't think that that frontage should affect the condition of the property as a non-con, non-conforming lot. Um, I will additionally say, we're, we're looking at this under the ordinance and not under chapter A for, forty A, section seven. But there is a provision in forty A, section seven that says if there's a structure that's been on there for at least ten years, it's to be treated as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, whether or not it actually, um, you know, predated the ordinance. It's, uh, ten years and you're done. There were structures on both of these lots for at least ten years while they were separated because the separation came before the ordinance. They jo- they joined together the parcels right before the ordinance was adopted and then in nineteen eighty-three, they separated again. So for at least ten years before this building was demolished, there were structures on both parcels. Um, so I think, uh, if you looked at it that way, I know there's not a structure on there now, but it would still would have been a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Um, and, and we do think, given the history of the lot and the fact that this was taken by the city, the structures were demolished and then it was sold as a buildable lot, this should be treated as a buildable lot under the ordinance. Um, lastly, uh, there's had been some question, um, about hazardous materials testing having been done. Um, and, and there was some discussion at the site visit about the fact that there's financing going on. The lender is going to be, um, fairly sufficiently concerned should there be any issue. But I did want to address what it says in the reports, having read through reports admittedly as a non-technical scientific person. Um, but what it says is, in the hazardous building materials inspection, it identifies things within the building prior to diminish, demolition that need to be removed and disposed of appropriately. That is some asbestos material, um, some PCB and some lead, some things that have lead paint in them. Um, and within each of those findings, because there's, you know, there's, it's not everywhere, there's a few things. Within each of those findings, it, it contains a recommendation about disposing properly during deminish, demolition, okay? So it's not saying that there are hazardous materials within the soil. So for instance, in the asbestos section, it says, um, any asbestos must be managed and disposed of as asbestos waste. So that was things like flooring, sealant, caulking, um, again, all part of the building to be demolished. Um, and it, that'd be disposed of and abated in accordance with, um, our asbestos regulations. Um, with the lead-based paint, um, uh, there were doors, beams, windows, um, a lot of trim that had lead-based paint. And it says they wanted to make sure the contractors were protected against disposal, um, or in exposure. So again, dispose of it appropriately, worry about the contractors who are conducting the demolition. As far as PCBs, um, they were, again, building materials, flashing, sealant, caulking, adhesive. Um, and then, you know, some light, uh, equipment that might, lighting fixtures might contain mercury. Again, it's either to be recycled or disposed of appropriately.
So do you know, did they take the entire building and kinda just removed it and then filled the hole later? Is that basically what's happened?
That's my understanding.
They didn't bury any of the building, I guess, is...
I mean, there's the, the foundation.
Right.
So like the cement walls and the foundation.
Right, but as far as...
But I don't think...
What you mentioned.
Yeah. I don't think the building materials were buried in the site. And, and, uh, Mr. Chartier, you know, had talked about this with Trevor Beauregard, who had provided us with the copies of the two tests. It's his understanding that there is a certification that a disposal properly occurred after demolition. Mr. Beauregard, when I tried to contact him, today is out until Thursday. So, um, I can make the representation to you, I can't give you a document right now.
You know, 'cause I read through the report, but I couldn't tell if there were any test borings done?
Right.
The, um, it contains a description of what is done. And if you're talking about description, uh, of borings into the soil.
Yes.
Yep. Um, in the twenty-one E inspection report, they did a visual inspection. I'm just gonna ask because my client is much more technically inclined than I am if he knew of any soil borings.
I don't know. And what, I also tried to talk to Trevor a couple days ago, but he's gone for a week. But what he led me to believe is that he found in his office the initial documentation of them doing a soil test and a twenty-one E and that, the first finding of that. And you have a copy of that, I believe. The first finding of that was that it, everything was good. And then he said, when they find it first like that, then usually there's a follow-up documentation. He said, I probably can find it, it's buried somewhere in the office, but I can't find it in that day.
Well, generally, if something is, if, if they're doing borings, et cetera. See, my first reaction reading this is two words, remediation plan. And generally, if there was a remediation plan prepared, uh, and followed through on, that's got to be in the DEP, is recorded somewhere as an adjunct to this. Because it's gotta show what was found and recommended to be done and the closure if, if it's done. And the other thing, maybe you're gonna get to it, but I read in here about, they found underground storage tanks, USTs. One of them was just laying on its side with nothing in it, but there were several others, I believe, to the rear of the property. But I didn't see anything in reading of where they removed, when they were removed. And when the first one that I read had nothing in it, that didn't raise a concern with me. But if any of them had any fuel oil or some kind of oil in it, then you would definitely boreings and see what, if any soil is contaminated. And then it would have to be removed and there's gotta be a follow-up on that. Then the last part I followed with in this, if any of that occurred, there could be, it doesn't have to be, but a monitoring period because they have to check if, especially if it's fuel oil, that dissolves over time. There's microbes that eat that. And they might say, well, for the next three years, you have to test this site. But I didn't see any of that in there. So I guess my, to capsulize that is maybe a search of the DEP as an adjunct to this report should be undertaken to see if there's anything there. Unless a representative, you know, from Fuss O'Neil is here and can, and add a conversation to that or add some kind of credence.
So I would, I, I don't, we don't have a representative here.
Okay.
Um, I would add to that, the, I, I read the portion about the storage tanks. They weren't in the ground, they were in the basement. Um, so my recollection, and I'm trying to hear, uh, here. So on the environmental site assessment on page eleven, it states that no evidence of USTs was observed during the site inspection. And that's at the, the last sentence on page eleven. So I, I don't think it was underground, I think it was some tanks that were in the basement. Um, the, there were the big factory, um...
Let me see that, 'cause my page was, it's probably in a different section.
Yeah, that was the twenty-one E. And it's the highlighted one. Here's the other one.
Okay, this is, yeah, no, it was, nothing. That's good.
Good. Um, and then on page ten, it talks about, um, one AS, AST. So I, I think that is inside, but in the basement. Storage tank, um, was lying in the northeastern corner of the basement. I'm reading from page ten of the last paragraph. This tank did not appear to be associated with the heating system. There were three addition, and there was no staining or other release observed. Um, there were three other tanks for heating oil, didn't, uh, there was no staining, um, observed except for, um, a little bit of staining around a sump pump in the basement. And so the sump pump needed to be removed. So I, I think that's the extent of the environmental concerns. Now, it's always great to have the certificate saying all of the disposal was done appropriately. But the city was the owner at the time that the demolition occurred. So what is going to happen is that if the city did demolition and the city didn't properly dispose of it, the city is going to have liability to do any remediation from improperly disposing of it, especially when they had reports done and therefore had knowledge prior to the demolition. So, uh, you know, I, I can't imagine that the city undertook this job and, and just buried all the waste when they went to the trouble of having the reports done. I, I just, I don't think that's the case. It's not the representation that has been made to the client. Um, but if there is a problem, it's, it's not gonna be the client's problem. So, um, you, you know, that, my client's trying to do a project where he put the RFP in for this type of project, the city accepted it. He has paid, um, you know, a market rate value for this property. And he's trying to under, undergo the process for approval of a project that has been designed so to, you know, create a benefit for the neighborhood and impact it as little as possible. Um, a- and so I think he's trying to take all of the actions that he can in order to make sure that this, um, project is appropriate for the neighborhood and a good project for the city.
Okay. One other issue that we discussed, I think, at the, uh, site visit is a different grading of the property to, to try to help reduce the flow of water. I'm not sure which side that is.
It was on Rock Street.
Yes, towards Rock Street side.
Into Mr. Montville's property?
Yes.
Yeah.
And...
Angles down.
Have you addressed that or are you planning on addressing that in, in this plan or...
I haven't addressed it in this plan, but, um, what I, what I said on site was that if we're in there with big equipment and whatever, digging a hole anyway, that we would do the best we could to swale that s- corner so that the water's not ending up in his backyard the way that he described it was now compared to what it was before. And Mr. Montville's not here, I don't think.
No, he's not.
But he seemed, you guys were all there, he seemed like he was good with that. And I even offered to have him come up on site when my excavator guy is there. And I, I would still do that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, but it'd be nice to have it documented somewhere to say that, um, that was part of the intent.
We could, um, put some language in it as a condition, perhaps, describing that rear corner.
Yes.
As an intent, though, I can't, I can't change the earth, you know what I mean?
No, but if you're gonna grade it, you can...
I can grade that, I can grade that corner, but there's abutters on all sides.
I understand.
So, uh, however we write it in there, let's just make it reasonable.
Well, I think, yeah, if we do write it in, uh, it would be to address the, uh, water in that upper right corner.
Yes.
And change the elevation, et cetera, to best direct the water away or back onto the site.
Yeah, onto, uh, the, the site itself, yeah, that sounds right.
As we're aware of it, you've got a butters, so you've got, you'd have two or three people to satisfy. And you get two of them set, one gets a little water.
Yeah, right, I don't wanna take it from one side and put it to the other. But if we can kick it back onto the property itself, it's a big enough property, I think it can...
But I think the board would be as reasonable as possible to, you know, to, not exactly, you're gonna add twenty-two feet to this and add us more to address the water flow.
Sure.
And address the flow back onto the site as best as possible.
Yeah, that's good.
I do have a, just a question and I know you have all the great intentions of saying, you know, the city would make sure they took care of this, et cetera. My past work history has not always spoken to that correctly. Uh, things have re, come back to, as you say, bite you when you thought it was gonna happen. What I'd like to propose is an effort made to contact the DEP from this report and determine if there is a follow-up to this report in terms of resolution of the noted items, removal of asbestos, et cetera. And so really a remediation plan that was put into effect, if you wanna call it that, and has been satisfied, if there are any conditions. And what I'd like to do is defer decision on your case tonight, but I'd like to move the decision process out two weeks. So I'll give you two weeks to search this with the DEP. I mean, if that doesn't, if that does not allow adequate time, you can contact Mariola and she would let us know. But I think you would have enough time in two weeks. Hopefully, the DEP would respond and come back with a response. If there is a report, got a copy of it and just quickly peruse it and let the board know, or Mariola. And then I will schedule a decision meeting ASAP, it doesn't have to wait till next month.
Okay.
I just, I just, I've been through this and I just, I know the city would be liable. But that's very simple, it's, the city's liable, but it causes a lot of disruption to the property owners, the houses and the abutters when they start getting into this.
And to the applicant trying to go forward.
Yeah, I mean, they could slap a cease and desist on something if it came up. Or in the future, somebody sues. And, yeah, now you've got legal action, et cetera, ties everything up. And I just wanna eliminate that if possible. And I would like to try over the next week or two to see if we can resolve that. And I'm proposing it. If you say no, then I'll have, we'll have to work on the info we have tonight. Or we can wait hopefully in two weeks or less. But I need, I only need four, as you know, forty-eight hours to post the decision meeting. So it's, it can be very quick.
Okay. Um, you know, so as far as information, getting information to the board, within the next week, we should hopefully have an answer by, uh, Mr. Beauregard 'cause he should be back. We assume that answer is gonna be that the city has undertaken that. Um, I, I want to be careful how far down the road we go with the DEP. Uh, you know, we're here for the zoning issue and, and the state takes care of any environmental concerns. Um, so they're, they're certainly the agency that would do any enforcement if enforcement was required. Um, I, so I, I certainly would be, you know, willing to look. Um, I, I would, in a very friendly manner, not concede that, um, it's, it's the job of the ZBA to do the enforcement if there is an issue. And again, focusing back on the fact that there, i- if there is a liability issue, it's going to be on the city that con- uh, conducted the demolition. Um, and, and should have disposed according to its own reports. And, and should have disposed according to its own reports of any hazardous materials That's something that really the city department should work out, how they're going to do if they need to do that.
Okay, and I'm not proposing the Z B A is going to enforce it for cleanup. That's not under our purview to do that.
Right.
I think it's more of alerting your applicant, there's a potential twenty-one E issue here. So, does he want to proceed with that potential that is there? Plus, his financing institution is not going to go with open arms in knowing they've got a twenty-one E problem. And yes, the city would take care of it, but I think it would put everybody on alert and record that something does exist, and there's decisions to be made at that point in time. But we would not say you must clean that up before we give you a permit.
All right.
That's not our, it's not under our authority to do that. But I think we want to make sure that if we're going to give a permit, that it's going to be a good permit, and then just alert your, your client to say, do I want to proceed with this? Or conversations would start with the city of how they're going to handle it, to protect him at the same time.
Yep. No, I understand, it's, we're both concerned on each side, just trying to get to the right resolution of, of that issue.
Yep.
So, let me, I, I think that Mr. Beauregard is going to be able to resolve the problem. And if the board would accept the report from him stating that the disposal had taken had taken place appropriately, according to the plan, then I would suggest that maybe we wouldn't need to go to the D E P. But if the report does not, then we would take a look at what the D E P said.
The board will concede to that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I mean, if he says, if he's complete, that's fine. If it goes forward and something comes up, there's a legal issue with the city at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that would be fine if your client is willing to do that.
Yeah, yes, yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I think we've come to the point where you're going to continue.
No, I'm good.
No, I'm, I'm good. I just had an issue with the water, but Mel brought it up, so it's fine.
Okay, so did I hear a motion to continue this case at least, so say, for two weeks?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We'll consider, continue it in two weeks or sooner.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you for the other work on this.
Two weeks being May thirtieth.
May thirtieth?
It's two weeks.
Okay. If it conflicts with May thirtieth, the holiday, we'll just move it to the next business day.
Twenty-ninth is the holiday.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
So, what's next?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. When are you going again?
I'm all done. They, they didn't have a call.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, then the next case will be case oh-five-oh-one-two-oh-two-three. Patrick Fisher. Okay, Mr. Fisher, the case, it's, it says, you need a requirement for a special permit, six-seventy-five dash eleven-seventy of the Gardner City Code. And because you're constructing or wishing to construct a two-family dwelling on Lot One, Green Street, identified as parcel ID forty-seven-seventeen-six, under six-seventy-five, attachment on table of uses number three, a special permit's required from the zoning Board of Appeals. You're, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, I'm Patrick Fisher.
And your address, sir?
Fourth, Eighth Street, Templeton, Dallas.
Okay, well, I'll let you know, the board is familiar with that property.
Who's sitting in this case?
That's why I wanted to try and keep it...
You're familiar with it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so at this time...
Who's going to be Andy?
Randy is going to take over as the third member, as he is familiar with this property from prior time. So, it'll be me, Mr. Cornet, myself, Ray LaFawn, and Randy Heggler. You may begin.
Yeah, I wanted to keep it as simple as possible, because the lady that had bought the property before me had passed away, and she wanted to do a two-family, and...
She passed away?
It was, it was just, you know, it was really a good idea. And I have, I have a mother that's ninety-seven, ninety-two years old, and she lives in Boston, so I have to drive to Boston, and it's kind of a far ride for me all the time to go down there. Spent three, four months, or five months this year, just babysitting her for her heart transplant, stuff that she's gone through.
Would you be more comfortable sitting down?
Yeah, yeah.
Please do.
If you don't mind.
No, miss, I was going to ask that.
Yeah, you can sit right there if you'd like.
Yeah.
Just make sure the camera can get you on.
Can you see him on the camera?
Yes, you're good.
That's kind of what we, me and my wife decided. My wife bought the property, and we liked what the two-family looked like, and we thought we'd just do the same thing. I've been building my houses for over forty years, and I've done probably four hundred frames, thirty-eight brand-new houses, and familiar with most of all the building inspectors in this area. And I do the site work, I've done site work for thirty-seven years, thirty-five years.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah. But now that I have Parkinson, I sub a lot of my stuff out. You know, I just have to. But I don't want to get into a crazy, you know, too costly house. And I didn't want to end up with a, a permit that was only good for us, because if something was to happen to me, my wife would want to be able to recap the money that I had to put into the house. And I don't want to see her end up with a, a two-family house that she can't use it as a two-family anymore, because something happened to one of the people. So, I was trying to get something simple and on paper.
Okay, well, Mr. Fisher, you know, under special permit, there's nine items that you have to address. It's written up in the package that you submitted.
Yeah.
You can either read them, or I can read them for you. You want me to do it? You'll do it?
What page is it?
Well, you can read right from these if you want. I'll let you read, and then I'll just take them back for the file.
The proposal shall be suitable or located in the neighborhood which it is proposed and/or the entire city, and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses warranted by right in the same district. And I feel it is, the proposed use is compatible with rural residential districts. The proposal is for a two-family residential home. The proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets and property improvements. And it's almost nine acres, eight-point-seven-to-five acres. There's plenty of room on the property, and we're using the same driveway that they decided to use, same cutout in the stone wall. The homeowner would provide proper effective access to the site. According to public records, the property was inspected by the board on May second, two thousand and nineteen. The proposal shall divide, provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading, unloading vehicles, goods, products, materials, equipment incident on to the normal operation of the establishment or use. Adequate parking is planned for the home as shown on submitted lot drawing of the proposed home and its location. The proposal shall provide adequate, appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use, disposal of sorridge, refuse, and other waste products, methods of drainage of surface water. And I do believe that this is all taken care of with the subject perk test and the design that they're going to give me. The lot will be served by private well and approved Title V subject system. The proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air, water, pollution, erosion, flood, noise, holder, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. There will be no permanent nuisance created by the construction of this home. Notice it's permanent, because there's always a little nuisance when you're building something. I mean by the noise. The proposal shall not be substantially inconvenienced or hazardous to a butters, vehicles, pedestrians, determined by the S P G A. The proposal will not be inconvenient or hazardous to pedestrians. The applicant provided clear evidence that the recommended four-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot line system was met in both north and south directions. The proposal shall be in harmony with general purpose and intent of this chapter. The proposal is in harmony with the neighborhood being a residential property. It's similar to the neighborhood. The proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on the city service tax base and employment opportunities. There will be no detrimental impact on the city service, any that will increase the tax base. The proposal is consistent with the city's community's development plan or master plan. Construction is consistent with the city master plan. If the proposal, if the proposal is on the property that was subject to zoning map amendment accompanied by a sketch concept plan pursuant to section six-seventy-five dash eleven-six-oh B, a statement as to the development's consistency with said sketch or concepts plan, and an explanation as to the reasons justified via variation, if any. Not applicable, because I'm looking for a special permit for two families. I believe question number ten is referring to a variance permit.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you for that. Right now, I'll just ask if, thank you. Any of my members have any question, Mr. Fisher, right now?
Not right now.
Not right now.
Okay. Now, Mr. Fisher, I'm just going to open it up to the floor. Okay. Are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Be it known there are no representatives to speak, are there any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Let it be known there are no abutters to speak in favor of. Are there any abutters to speak in opposition to this application? Any abutters to speak in opposition to this application? Let it be known there are no abutters to speak in opposition to this application. Any interested parties who would like to speak regarding this application? Sir?
Martin Gray, two-oh-five Woodland Ave. I'm just wondering where that lot is. I, I walk that road all the time. I live right up the road at Woodland Ave. Green Street's in the back of my house. I just wonder where the lot is.
It's on the border of Winchington.
It's right at the Winchington line.
Winchington.
If you're going out...
That's one-forty.
That's also Green Street.
Oh.
Yeah, if you're going out of town, it's the last, it's the last lot before you get out of town.
Oh, okay.
On the right hand side.
Yeah, your next building, I think, is that little farm stand that's up there on one-forty.
No, it's the brick, little brick, 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 stone, stone.
The brickstone in the farmhouse. It's just right at...
Literally the town line.
It's sort of crest right there, and it's just before the Winchington line.
We're on forty-five feet of Winch, in Winchington.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this application? Anyone else would like to speak regarding this application, either for or against? Let it be known there are no further comments from anyone regarding this application. I'll open it up to my board members for questions.
Mel first.
No, I really don't have any questions at this point.
Mr. Fisher, there was a decision for a special permit that was issued back in, was it two thousand and nineteen? And it was actually included with your, your package. Did you review the conditions, one through five, that were issued as, as part of that?
Yes, I did.
Do you have any issue with any one of those conditions?
Well, then, thinking, thinking, if she sells that property, somebody else can use it as a two-family. That's one of the problems I see in...
Okay. Which would be, for the sake of the audience, the final, one condition on the issuance of the variance of the special permit, it says, the special permit stays with the owner if the property is sold. The new owner must apply for a new special permit. That's the one he's...
Yep, that's right there.
...perceives as being a potential issue for him, correct?
That would be an issue for you?
Yeah, it would be an issue to me, because she's dumping her own money into it. She's dumping a lot of money into a house today, and average rent is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's your site work in your...
So, is it her tent, she's going to live in half of it and rent the other half? Or is she going to take it, build it, flip it?
Well, she, you know, she's not a young girl either. You know, we're all, we're all at that age where ten years from now, we'll get our mid-seventies, you know?
So, is, again, her intention there to live in one of the units?
Yes.
Is, okay. I don't have any other questions. I, I recall this lot clearly.
Oh, I recall it. I think the conditions as they exist, and let's just for the audience read. I'll read you the five conditions, because we're very familiar with this property. The driveway entrance can be no further south on Green Street, Route one-forty, than the existing break in the stone wall, as outlined in the submitted lot drawing at the meeting of April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. A driveway permit must be obtained, if required, prior to installation. Number two, the, the final house design and construction must be submitted, must be as submitted to the board at its meeting of April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, or similar. Number three, driveway must be constructed such that drivers will not back out onto Green Street, one-forty, to exit the property. Number four, there must be a paved driveway apron at least twenty feet long. Five, the special permit stays with the owner. If their property is sold, the new owner must apply for a special permit. And that, those are the conditions that were put forth. I'd like to ask just a couple of questions.
I have a question for the board.
You've got a question?
For the board. As to whether these conditions apply to a new permit, considering this permit is no longer valid. I assume those conditions go away, and they have to be new conditions if this is granted.
It'd be the same conditions would be, could be submitted.
Same, same or similar or...
It could be, but it, it has to be reestablished.
Mr. Fisher, I'm going to ask a question. In the packet, this is a picture of the two-family home. Is this the home you're planning to construct or have constructed?
Pretty much exactly the same. It'll be a three-car garage, thirty-by-thirty-four garage. Three bedrooms on one side, and two bedrooms on the other.
But it's not going to be a two-level, it's going to be...
No, it's going to be a ramp.
A long, a long ramp.
Yeah. And it's going to be separated, how?
Separated by the garage.
Okay, the garage is the separation.
Yep.
Is, it's not going to be condo, it's going to be owner, we'll say owner-occupied or something like that. So, one unit is a rental unit, it's not going to be a condo-type situation.
No, I'm not planning on making any condos.
Okay.
I was going to stick with everything that had in there. The only thing I had a problem with was if, if she ever sold that property, you know, she would, it would be a problem selling the property, because you've got two bedrooms... Because you've got two bedrooms on one side, three bedrooms on the other. The septic system carrying it with separate tanks probably will probably have one special tank on one side, one special tank on the other side. And, uh, you're not gonna turn that into a single-family house later. Because the garage separates it.
Excuse me, if the property is sold, the entire property would be sold, not, not individuals, because you said you're not creating condos. So if that property's ever sold, I assume it's the total, both units would have to be sold because they're not condos.
Say that again?
If you sell that property at some point in the future, this is my understanding, is then because you're not creating condos, they're not individual units, so therefore if it's sold, it's the entire property that's sold. Is that not true?
Right.
Yeah, you're not setting it up as two separate houses.
No.
Yeah, so if the property is sold, you can't just sell half of it.
Right.
You'd have to sell both.
Right.
So I think that's what Mr. Cornet is getting at.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm against, you know, keeping somebody from keeping the permit as an impairment.
Yeah, and that, I think that's fine. I think we're trying to get clarification that in our condition, prior condition, we said the new owner would have to get a special permit. But you're selling, you would be selling both units. And the person buying it, because either you or the other individual wouldn't be living there anymore. And they would just be buying the house, and then they would have to come back here, they would, for a special permit to take it as a two-family home. So I don't, I'm trying to see how that would impact...
Well, it would impact it a great deal because when you sell something, if you sell it as a two-family or you sell it as a single-family, I can only sell that as a single-family.
You wouldn't be able to because on the assessor's roll, it would be listed as a two-family.
Okay, so then I sell it as a two-family, and then they buy it, and what if they can't get permission to have it used it as a two-family? What do we, what do we go from there?
Well, let's...
Court?
Let's take a step back. If, if you sold it, if they bought it, then came to us for a special permit, and we said, "No, that's their problem, not yours, because you've already sold it." If it's contingent upon them getting a special permit, then that could impact whether you could sell it or not if they wanted to proceed with that. Now, they could proceed, I mean, in trying to get it to a single-family, but they would have to go to the city, you know, petition to change it from two-family to one-family, so it'd be complex. So I mean, that's something the board can look at and consider at this point of whether we put condition number five back in, we modify it, or eliminate it. Any comments from my members on that?
I'd certainly be willing to discuss it as to why we would want that in there.
I'm trying to recall why it's in there to begin with. There was some reason we put it in there. It's an unusual condition that we don't usually...
No, we usually don't.
No.
And it's, there's a reason. I don't, I don't recall what the rationale was at the time.
But I think it had something to do with one of the parties with a medical issue.
There was an objection from a neighbor too, I think.
Yep. You know, there's no objections tonight from any neighbors, which I think, you know, helps us out a little bit. But I don't remember the exact... And it's not really detailed within the minutes of our last meeting. So it's one condition the board would have to consider.
Yeah.
You know, I think we don't need to go see it. Everybody knows. Have you been there?
No, I have not, so I do have to go see it.
So maybe we will have to take one quick swing by, show Mel. And I do have a couple of notes that I wrote down, Mr. Fisher. We don't have a plot plan. I mean, we have this plan, and that's, you know, it's technically a plot plan.
That is, that was a plot plan. I mean, I have a full, a bigger blown-up picture of it, but...
Do you have a full-size copy of this?
This is two different lots. This is the lot with the house before. This is the lot that we're doing the house on.
Yeah, as I recall, this was all at one time, one big lot, and then there was a subdivision of the lots.
Yeah, that's just a gate going in through the field or something.
So do you have a plot plan?
Yeah, I have the original plot plan, but it looks just like this. It's signed off by all the people and everything else. It's the same thing as...
It's the same parcel of land?
Yeah, it's just a bigger piece of paper.
You don't have your septic plan done or anything yet that shows the...
No, I don't have the plan done, but I have the perk, perk, perk trons on. I think I included them.
I don't remember seeing the perk.
I don't see, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see it. I don't recall seeing that. The septic plan would show the house and everything.
Sure.
It would show those two relevant locations.
On his plot plan.
On the septic plan.
Yeah.
I can see not having this done yet because it's subject to...
Yeah, I don't see it.
Okay. Well, I think, Mr. Fisher, what we'd like to do is come out and take another look at it because Mr. Cornet has not seen the property.
Go ahead. You're welcome. Come over here anytime you want.
Then if we can get the plot plan or the septic plan, so we can see where your well and septic system's gonna be.
Yeah.
And if you've got your house, where your house is gonna be located.
Yeah.
And then the dimensions of, from the side boundaries, front and rear boundaries, you know, 60 feet, 30 feet, 40, 180.
Trying to remember is, what's referred to as the backlot, does that go with your property, or is that stayed with the other owner, this backlot?
Say that again?
Is this backlot? Does this go with your property?
Yeah, it goes with my property.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't remember why, why there was differentiation between the...
And I think, if I remember, the individual in opposition kept mentioning about a lot of debris was dumped in the back and everything, and had concerns about that and the location of the house.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was another, another problem too, because the city used that for 140 when they held 140.
Yep.
And the city brought all that material in there.
That's right, it was a state, yeah, I remember.
That's right.
Yeah, that's...
We won't say nothing about that one.
It was a comment. There's a lot of fill, fill in the back there, yeah.
But it really doesn't show. If you're looking from the road, you don't see a pile of debris. It's just like the tree line. So we'd like to come and see it.
Yeah.
We'd like, if you've got a copy of the plot plan and the septic site plan?
Yeah, I do. We actually have it too, right in the board health office.
Okay, so if you can get copies of, we've come up, you can give them to us?
Yep, yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, is there any special time that's good or not good for you?
Name it, and I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, so now... Since I turned mine off, I left it home. But I'm flexible. That's good for you too. I'd like to do it next week would be better for me. This week is pretty tied up.
I can't do it this week.
There's a calendar right in there.
Thank you.
Some evening, right? So any day except for Wednesday or Thursday. After work is fine with me.
Anytime except Wednesday or Thursday. I can do the, I can do... I can do Monday or Tuesday.
Tuesday the 23rd?
Yeah.
Yep, what time?
You tell me. 6:30?
Perfect.
6:30?
Tuesday 6:30? Are we from today?
AM or PM?
6:30 in the morning.
AM or PM?
PM.
Okay, it won't be dark though, right?
No, it's, it's almost 8 o'clock and it's still light.
Always a jokester.
We're not gonna, it doesn't take that long for us to do a site visit either, so we won't have to bring flashlights.
No, I think probably 20 minutes most will be gone.
Yeah, it won't take long.
You've got the paperwork. We're gonna look. He's gonna see.
I'll speak of the house.
If, and I think one of the conditions, we talked about the driveway and having the apron. If you come on your plot plan, draw out where you're gonna have your driveway, just a couple of lines, or...
It's, the opening's already there. I'm not gonna go any, I don't want that. The opening that you guys accepted.
Well, what you can do is, you take a couple of rocks. Mark out, here's the driveway, the front of it where it's going in. And with the apron, a couple more, say, here's the back part of the apron, so we can see where they go in so they can turn around and come out. Just, if you wanna use spray paint on the graphs, that's fine. Just something to mark it so we can see it.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you want a rough idea where the house is gonna be located?
Yeah, I do. A rough idea too, if it's not on your plan. If you get spray of four, four rocks, here are the four corners of the house where it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Okay? And that will make it, you know, so we can see exactly driveway, house location, and we see what your, where your property boundary is. Your boundary when you're looking your property on your right-hand side, you could put like a stick or a rock, say, well, there's my right-hand boundary. One on your left, there's my left-hand boundary, and then we'll see where your house sits. Okay?
Property sets, so you can pretty much see where the boundaries are.
I remember the break in the wall.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay. So any other...
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from Randy?
No.
No.
Okay, last of anybody. Any questions in the audience? No questions from the audience? So I do air a motion to continue this case next month.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, no opposition. We'll meet with you on the 23rd at 6:30.
Yeah.
And in this case, we'll come to the board again next month. And if everything is satisfied, we'll move for a decision that night.
Okay.
Okay?
Do I have to come to that meeting?
I think it would be good to come.
Okay.
Because then in case we come up with another question or two, is that a problem for you to come that night?
No.
Okay. I think it would be better that you could, or a representative come if you wish to represent your sister, brother, agent, attorney, or yourself. You can come.
June the 20th. June the 20th is the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See you next Tuesday, 6:30.
All right. I'll just give a minute to put this back in order here. Okay. Mr. Ambly?
Correct.
Okay. All right, next case is 05, 02, 2023, special permit. Michael Ambly, 437 Main Street. Castle ID R22/22/13. And the request is to conduct an auto detailing business. And I'm just trying to get the denial letter. And it says, "Your application to operate an auto detailing and pressure washing business located at 437 Main Street. Property is located within commercial two zoning district, COM2. Your proposed use requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals as per section 675-1, table of uses, number 48." Okay, Mr. Ambly, you're gonna present yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is Michael Ambly. I live at 36 Bridgewood Lane in Gardner. As you've already stated, I'm trying to get a special permit here at 437 to conduct an auto detail, auto detailing business, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have for me.
Okay. I'll give you an opportunity to speak a little more, but when we first asked, if my members have any initial questions up front?
Not up front, no.
Okay.
I do have some.
Well, Mr. Ambly, you, you heard as Mr. Fisher answered nine questions.
Yeah, I have it right here. I was ready to go.
I was page. The floor is yours if you'd like to address those.
You got it. Scuba Squad Detailing Pressure Wash is in a general area consisting of several auto businesses in the surrounding area, such as Speedy, Mindy Key, Car Center, Caffees, and Advanced Auto Parts, so they get, you know, falls in a general neighborhood of automotive stuff. The next question, Scuba Squad Detailing is a drop-off in pickup detailing service which provides enough space for the quantity of vehicles that would be there at the same time. Moving forward, Scuba Squad Detailing has enough off-street parking to load and unload any deliveries of goods, products, materials. A part of the parking is right in front of the building and on the side. You guys will be able to see that in the plot this page here.
Yep.
To help you guys see a little better.
That's the old Bruce's station?
Yes, it was Bruce's auto. Moving on from there, we got Scuba Squad Detailing has a water drain behind the building. I plan on putting sandbags back there to kind of lead that water straight to the drain if, you know, you guys say that's what's needed. I just wanted to wait to get the special permit before I did anything. The facility will have an operational bathroom and water once the special permit is approved. That was a agreement between us.
Will it wash the vehicles inside?
Yes, sir.
Is your floor drain in the building now?
Not, not yet, no. I can do it outside or inside, whatever the agreement is from the board.
Now, if you put drains inside, isn't, do you have to put in holding tanks or anything to catch?
Maybe a separator.
Separator, something.
Do you know what the code requires?
I have no idea, honestly.
Okay, also, are you gonna do anything like ceramic coating or any of those type of things there?
Later on in the future. I wanted to take a few courses to do that stuff before I even get into it. So right now, it's just interior, exterior.
So it's basically washing inside, outside, and in and out, just the normal detailing?
Yeah.
So just standard detailing, you know, waxing and whatever?
Yes, sir.
Well, you, you mean like ceramic wax or what?
No, it's like a...
There's a ceramic coating
Yeah.
that they actually do, and I'm not sure if that's considered hazardous or not. I mean, it's some pretty nasty stuff.
Yeah, I wanted to take courses on it before I even get into it, so...
So is it something?
No, I don't have...
Don't have what?
I don't have this in the file.
I don't know what's in here.
Okay, you can continue.
Okay. The nature of this business is to safely clean vehicles by managing small machinery and using non-hazardous products. Since it is an appointment-based only business, noise, vibration, erosion, lights, etc. will not be a nuisance. Scuba Squad Detailing understands the importance of the SPGA requirements to follow and abide by its laws and regulations. Scuba Squad Detailing will follow and honor all city guidelines and policies slash ordinances. Number eight here is Scuba Squad Detailing is being established to help give back to the community, such as, you know, keeping people's cars clean. Maybe one day I can, you know, get successful enough that I can donate jerseys to a youth soccer team, so on, something like that.
Yep.
Scuba Squad Detailing understands the importance of complying with the city's community development plan or master plan. And then number 10, I believe, was not applicable because of the special permit. I didn't really understand that one, so...
How'd you come up with the name Scuba Squad?
You guys ever seen the Adam Sandler movie, Big Daddy? Where he's got Scuba Steve, the little action character? Well, it's kind of a side joke between my brothers and I. We call ourselves the Scuba Squad because we always loved that movie growing up, so...
It's original.
It just, if it's.
Now, how many cars do you expect to be there, assuming your business is...
At one time, is what you're saying? One or two.
Will there be any cars stored overnight?
If there is, it would be maybe one. I don't wanna have more than one vehicle in there at night.
Or customer drop-off?
Yeah, right now, I'm a weekend warrior, so it's, I'm steady for doing one or two cars a weekend.
And you work, what days of the week would you work on this business?
As of right now, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay, in the future, should it be very successful, how many days a week would you work?
I would like to do Monday through Saturday and then have Sunday off because it's a holy day for me, so...
And how late would you propose working? And how late would you propose working?
Eight o'clock at the latest.
Is there any exterior lighting on that building?
They do have lights up top that shine right over. And they do have cameras on the other building over at four-fifty-seven facing that building, a triangle.
And your employees probably be one or two?
Just myself right now.
You're not gonna bring your brothers in on this?
At some point, I gotta get it going, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I see Jennifer Wood had sent a letter, or she has a letter in here.
Yes, sir. She couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to be.
I'm gonna read the letter, just to put it in the record. April eleventh, two thousand twenty through twenty-three. City of Gardner, zoning board of appeals, city hall annex room one-oh-one, Gardner, Mass. oh-one-four-four-zero. Regarding authorization for tenant to petition for special permit. To whom it may concern, Wood Enterprises, Inc. is the owner of four-thirty-seven Main Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID three-seven-five-nine. Wood Enterprises is leasing the location of four-thirty-seven Main Street to one Michael Amblo of thirty-six Ridgewood Lane Apartment one, Gardner, Mass. oh-one-four-four-zero. Mr. Amblo has signed a commercial lease with Wood Enterprises to operate an auto detailing and pressure washing business at four-thirty-seven Main Street. The company so authorized at this location is Scuba Squad Auto Detailing. Whereas, the City of Gardner Department of Inspektional Services has denied the application for Mr. Amblo to operate an auto detailing pressure business at the location where citing, and where citing need for special permit as per six-seventy-five-eleven-seventy special permits of the city zoning ordinance. Wood Enterprises hereby authorize Mr. Amblo to petition for a special permit with the City of Gardner, Zoning Board of Appeals for the property listed above. President Jennifer L. Wood, signed, Jennifer L. Wood, dated four-eleven-twenty-three. Okay, any questions, gentlemen? Before I open it up?
No, not, not at this point.
Okay, are there any representatives to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Be it known, there are no city representatives present? Any butters to the property who would like to speak regarding this application? Any butters to the property present like to speak regarding this application? Have it known there is no opposition, throw butters? Any interested parties who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties to speak regarding this application? Have it known no interested party to speak in opposition? Is there anyone in here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Be it known, excuse me, no one to speak in favor? So I'll ask my members if they have any questions, Randy?
No.
No? No?
I don't have any further questions, but I do, I would like to visit the site.
Of course.
What are you gonna do for an outside sign?
I was thinking the small little, like, metal sign right up top that just says Scuba Squad.
Not illuminated or anything?
Okay, and there, the ordinance has signed sizes, so... As long as you meet...
I was able to provide that for me, so...
As long as you meet those sizes, you don't have to come back here for that, if, if we grant this. But, um, I'm happy to hear that you've got lights, you've got cameras. Are you planning to do any, I'm gonna call landscaping, because a lot of it is sort of dirt and, and if you're cleaning the car and detailing it, they don't wanna bring it back out in the dust and the dirt.
Right, I know there, it's like, so the front half is pavement and the half, like, I guess you could call it the rock that's like, I wanna call it gravel maybe? And then the rest in the back is just dirt, like you were saying, so...
Yeah, you're not planning to put any cars back there?
No.
Okay. Uh, your hours that you've mentioned, I think are reasonable hours. You know, at least at this point. And you've addressed the nine issues. I don't have any further questions, other than, maybe on the same day, do you think we can go down? The twenty-third? Are you available, sir?
What day is that?
That's Tuesday the twenty-third.
At what time would you come, cause I do work at night shift?
Seven o'clock.
What time, what, do you, do you work nights?
Yeah, I work two jobs, and so I work on the weekends doing detail right now, so... I have Fridays off.
You don't have anything off on Tuesday?
I don't go into work till three forty-five, so if you could do it before then.
Yeah, and you're working.
I don't need to say if you wanna go, I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with it.
If you guys talk to Jen, I'm sure she'd be more than happy to let you guys in there and do what you gotta do.
Maybe why don't we contact Jen Wood?
Cause she's there, so...
Everything is gonna be inside, pretty much, for your business.
Yes, sir.
And, um, you're gonna have no fuel, nothing, no hazardous materials, no chemicals, et cetera?
No, I think the, the thing that I would be concerned about is if you're gonna wash vehicles and the various things that they use to, to wash the vehicles, borderize them, borderize them hazardous. And that's why you need a separator or something to collect this water, you can't just dump it somewhere.
Yes, sir.
So, the reason I'd like to take a look at the place is, is exactly how they're gonna handle that.
Okay, I mean, we can refer that to another department.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
So if, if the board acts in favor?
Yes, sir.
A, a condition that we could put on, that you would need approval from a, one of the city departments regarding the materials they're using, that they would not be considered hazardous or any issue. And you get an okay from them. I think one of them, one department, too, it just hit me, is the fire department. Cause they will come in and look.
Yes, sir.
So that's one we can recommend and go from there, they probably can handle everything, if it's hazardous materials, they will know that.
You know, if we get those type of answers, then I don't necessarily need to go there. Those are the issues I'd like to see addressed. So I'm not sure if a site visit would address those anyway.
I think we should just go and take a quick look inside.
Okay.
So we'll contact Jen.
Perfect.
And if you would let Jen know that Mariella will be contacting her to see if we can get in there, probably say seven o'clock on that Tuesday night, twenty-third. And then we can move forward. And I'll have Mariella contact the fire department. And they can take a look and give an inspection on that for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue this case to June?
Some more.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this case is continued to June. And Mr. Amblo, you're gonna take care of Jen Wood and
Yes, sir.
Confirming that for us?
Tuesday, seven o'clock.
It's Tuesday, June twentieth.
And now I'm just looking if there's any minutes or minutes here.
We have one more case. We have one more case.
We do?
Mm-hmm, we do.
You're not on it.
That's why I was almost ready to go home.
Not a chance.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the chair over to Mr. Haglund, who's gonna
Thank you, gentlemen.
Open up.
All right, thank you.
That'll be the last case before the board tonight. And I will just I'll depart, and when it's, you're finished, just let me know, so I'll come back in.
Okay.
There's my mess. There's the case, and I'm outta here. Oh, no. Oh, yeah, I took care of that. There you go.
All right, the next case before the board is from, uh, Millennium Holding Group Three Fund LLC, or MHG Three Fund LLC. It's for a variance at one-sixty-three, one-sixty-five Pine Street, Gardner, Mass. And the owner seeks parking relief. I don't see the current denial letter, but it would be the same denial letter that I think we had somewhere. Yeah, uh, yeah, right here, the application to operate a multifamily dwelling at one-sixty-three, one-sixty-five Pine Street, Gardner, Mass., parcel ID R twenty-two-six-eight. Located in the general residential three zoning district, is denied, does not comply with chapter six-seventy-five, attachment one, one colon one, um, number five, multifamily dwelling in the city of Coda Gardner, due to the building being vacant for two years, less the status, that's not the one we're looking for.
You have, here, Randy, that one's April.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's dated April fourteenth, I have reviewed your parking, revised parking plan for one-sixty-three, one-sixty-five Pine Street. Parking, proposed parking plan does not conform to the approved site plan, approved plan of record. This project originally required a minimum of sixteen spaces, two per apartment unit, through a variance, you're allowed to reduce the number of parking spaces to eleven, I think it was the special permit was issued for eleven. And your current proposal is to further reduce the number of parking spaces to nine. Mr. Bombachi, thank you.
David? Yeah, uh, thank you, everybody, so, um, back again, hi. So obviously, I, I included the original parking plan, which we discussed, um, back in, was it April, March, maybe?
Yep.
March. I know, you know, we went back and forth about some stuff, we did the site visit. Spots seven, eight, and nine on our proposed plan, which we deemed were, you know, a little bit too steep, not enough clearance, um, so we end up withdrawing the application. Um, one thing that was brought up during our discussions was if there was any properties nearby that we could find satellite parking for. So the proposal that we have in front of you is, um, we would remove the three spaces that, um, caused concern for the, the board, spaces seven, eight, and nine, we would reduce the the number of parking on-site down to just eight units, or, um, just down to, to eight spaces. And we would, um, build a thirty-by-forty parking space, parking lot, a thirty-by-forty foot parking lot at a, um, property that we own one street over on Washington Street. We'd build it on the front of the property, we could use it just for snow emergencies, which is pretty much our main concern on this property, is there is plenty of street parking, um, during normal times, but when the snow comes, the, the eight spaces on, on-site would limit the, the residents. And the idea is we could build a thirty-by-forty parking facility about four hundred yards away, or four hundred feet away. That could easily park six cars, um, if we did them tandem during a snow emergency, or four cars if they're just going to park in them under normal circumstances.
I, I did have a, a question, I see the four hundred feet, but that's going across other people's properties and, and so on, so that's not really a realistic way for them to, to walk through, so how far is it? Did you measure how long of walking down the streets and around?
Two miles or something like that?
Third of a mile.
Yeah, um, so it's not too, too far, it's probably a little bit far for, for walking, would it be easy enough for people to park cars during the snow emergencies and just kinda shop back and forth? It wouldn't be necessarily the, the best case scenario for everyday parking, but I don't think the residents would be using for everyday parking. The primary purpose of it would be to allow people to, to use during the snow emergencies, which is what we're expecting those extra spaces to be used for.
And how would you propose, uh, preventing people from parking in those locations that you proposed before?
I mean, we...
I mean, how do you, how do you prevent that?
In the, in the other spaces?
Yeah, on the, on the driveway, on the Pine Street. You know, your original proposal.
Yeah, so what we would do is, we would, we, we still gotta line them and number them, obviously, we're waiting for, you know, final decision before we go ahead and do so. So we would just go out and line the spaces based off of the proposal without lining those three spaces that we don't want.
And I would assume you put signage up that says, "Snow parking," that type of thing, along that road?
Yep, yep, um, yeah, all the time, we do that on most of our lots, where, you know, we normally give them decals for their parking, if they're not parking the right spaces, we reserve the right to tow at the owner's expense. We do that across, um, a lot of our properties, if people park in spaces they're not supposed to park in.
The, um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just concerned that, you know, the temptation would be there instead of walking two-tenths of a mile, or three-tenths of a mile. It's human nature.
No, no, I completely get it, we, we're trying to find a way to give people like that, that snow emergency parking when the streets are completely off limits, right? Like, that's, that's the main concern, I think, that the, you know, building inspector kinda showed, is like, when people don't have a place to park, they make stupid decisions, if we give them places to park, hopefully, we can encourage people to, you know, do so safely.
What's the number of Washington Street?
One-oh-five, one-oh-seven.
Okay. And you said you were gonna have those signed or something?
Yeah, we'll have them, um, we'll have them marked as dedicated for that spot. There are six units in that building, there is already parking for the residents at that building.
So you're not taking any parking away?
We're not taking any parking away, we're building new parking.
Are you gonna have a curb cut?
We would require a curb cut from the city, that's something that we would have to request. But there is, um, quite a few, um, drivers on the street.
And, um, oh, I just had a thought on that.
Now, you've got eight, eight units in the Pine Street property?
Down fifty percent?
Oh, no, I'm just, uh, it six, seven. One of the conditions I recall of the special permit was a minimum of one space per apartment. Right? So one apartment's not gonna have any parking?
No, we have, we have eight spaces there. Um, we have six in the back and two up front.
Where did, where was that written?
Six.
The special permit was down to one, did I? I guess I didn't, I didn't see that.
I think it, it, memory serves me, um, I should've printed it out. Minimum was one space per...
Right, cause it went, it went down allowed, uh, eleven.
Yep. But we have, we...
Sixteen.
I don't have... You don't have the, the original special permit, do you?
I, I don't, I have the original parking plan, um, which was the eleven.
I got the revised proposal one.
No, it was the decision for the special, Mariella, can you pull this file? See if we can pull out that decision.
The plan that was approved.
Specifically...
Cause there was a reduction in parking spaces.
There was, there was, there was a, some forgiveness for the parking, cause it didn't have the sixteen spaces that it needed.
Right, it went down to eleven.
But I think it, I think there, there was a condition in there related to the parking, there had to be at least one space per unit.
That's what I understand, but I don't have it in front of me.
I guess I missed that one.
So, which was eight.
And this was the closest building that we had that had, you know, favorable front yard for us to, to try to do something like this.
So now, what do you, on this, uh, property, what is that front lawn used for?
We cut it. It, they're, like, it's not really used for anything, it's just, it's just grass space, um, at the moment.
We pave it or just temporarily?
How many tenants live in, at, uh...
It's a six-unit building. There's parking in the back, there's a garage in the back. There's bins for garbage that are stored on the side, but the, this space isn't really used for anything other than, um, we mow it.
So there, there's six units between one-oh-five and one-oh-seven? Is it equal three in each?
Three...
Cause it said one-oh-five, one-oh...
I think it's, I think it's four and two.
Four and two?
I don't know the exact labeling of them, sometimes it's, yeah.
And, uh, what would you do to the front lawn on Washington Street to provide the parking?
Uh, we would put the curb cut, we would, we would pave it and make it so it's the permanent, permanent parking structure for them.
One of the cases before the board this evening, and I'm just putting this out there for, for information, one of the cases before the board this evening was the Rock Street property. They had to come for relief because the code only requires one driveway curb cut. Frontage of a property, less than two hundred feet apart.
Okay.
Is, can that driveway that you're proposing be tied to the existing curb cut that you've got there for the Washington Street?
Potentially, the driveway that's there is a shared driveway with the neighbor next door. So we don't have our own dedicated driveway, we could probably do something where this curb cut could connect to the back parking, so that we only have one driveway for the residents. The problem with the, the front and the back of the property is we're on slightly different grades. It wouldn't be, I guess, no, I guess from this lot to the back, we would be on the same grade. It wouldn't be, um, I guess, no, I guess from this lot to the back, we would be on the same grade. We would just have to loop around the building.
Not ideal, but.
But possibly.
I'm just trying to, you know, provide one solution where you don't have to go back to us, where.
Yeah, you, you do have to be very cautious on, if you're gonna create a second driveway, that might be a no-go before you start.
Okay.
So you just need to work with the building inspector to make sure.
So, um, on, on the revised parking where you've got eight spaces, the two buddy parkings, one through six, are they, have you allotted to the apartment numbers yet, or how, how are you divvying up the spaces per, per apartment?
I think they're, they're temporary lined at the moment, we didn't do, um, permanent lines. And so then, depending on what the final decision is, we'd go back and we'd line them and number them. As of right now, we just kind of dedicated them, and so far, people are cooperating. We would certainly do permanent lines and permanent numbers.
How many people you have living in Pine Street, how many apartments are rented?
Um, um, I believe all eight of them are leased. We were able to get, um, uh, temporary occupancy based off of, you know, satisfying the parking requirement by the end of the year. Um, most of the apartments just have two residents in each of them.
All right, if I can, um, this is the special permit that was granted for.
The, the.
The original special permit. And it says, "There must be one parking space dedicated to each apartment and shall be appropriately delineated." Buddy parking, which is shown on this is lots, parking spaces ten and eleven, um, on the submitted plan, located on the north side of the building, will be allowed for one apartment, it must be clearly identified. We, we realize, if I can speak for, um, Mike and, and Ray, who's not sitting on this one. Um, the thought was, be in buddy parking, if it was, it would create a problem if it was two different apartments.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it had to be the same apartment. And if snow storage impacts the parking spaces, that snow must be removed with, with the three primary, with the three conditions for the granting of the special.
And these are all single bedroom units?
No.
They're all two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
That's why we were, uh, up to sixteen.
Yeah.
Spaces.
Yeah.
I, I think even if they're one bedroom, it's, it's two per, per apartment. Schedule parking. A dwelling. Oh, yeah, you're two, two per dwelling, we're there for two or more bedrooms.
So you're already down almost fifty percent.
Down fifty percent.
So, under your current scenario that you're proposing here, there's gonna be one apartment without a dedicated space, right?
Um, we would, we would probably have the buddy parking be something that we would put two tenants that know each other well to collaborate on.
Yeah, but then, again, that would be a violation of the original special permit. I'm trying to work, trying to figure out a way of, um, is there? I know you had lot seven, and there was a concern about the, uh, clearance, turning radius for.
The other ones.
For lot seven.
And I do think, like, you know, and obviously, we haven't labeled them all, but I do know that someone is parking there, and there hasn't been any issues with that. Um, but obviously, when we were to go and do permanent lines, we would make it clear, you know, that that wouldn't be a parking space unless we think that that would be appropriate.
Yeah, but that, that is an, an issue around the buddy parking not being the same apartment. Those are usually nothing but trouble.
I mean, we, we encounter in a lot of properties, normally, it, it, they coexist for a little while, and then, you know, we end up having to intervene to kind of right the ship.
Yes, you do, 'cause I owned an apartment house for a while, so I understand.
Trying to avoid your headaches.
No, I, I get it, not my headaches, but my property manager appreciates it.
I had that situation once, it's not pretty.
So then, that would mean, as I'm thinking about it, if we're gonna end up with eight spaces, where are the eight spaces gonna be? 'Cause they're not, we don't have any plan here.
Yeah, we do right now.
Oh, we got another one?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we have the revised plan, which is what we had talked about last time. So we would eliminate.
Seven, eight, nine.
Seven, eight, nine, which were the concerns. I'd be okay with leaving seven if you think that would.
I have it here, Marty.
I thought I had them all.
Thanks.
So eight and nine were the concern being on the, on the, on the driveway with the clearance.
Okay.
So we can eliminate those two, um, potentially keep seven if that's something that would, that would work. I know there was a little bit of concern there, but I can tell you that someone is using it and there hasn't been any issues. Um, but we haven't lined it, so we haven't told them, you know, where, where to park in that space, or not to park in that space at the moment.
So if there, if, if someone's parking there, you have all the units back here parked?
And, yeah, there hasn't been any concerns.
No one's hit.
No, no calls, no questions, no nothing.
Of course, we haven't had snow since you've, and that's what this is the major issue about.
And that's why trying to do the satellite parking for, you know, somewhere between six and four cars dedicated to this lot, kind of allowing people to, to spread out and, and have their cars off the road, I was hoping would.
Washington Street property, you're gonna record something in that deed to dedicate these parkings for this parcel?
We can, we'll probably do a lease back, is probably the way that we'll do it, just to kind of avoid clouding the deed. But we'll probably just do a, a ninety-nine-year lease between the two buildings, they're both owned by the same entity, same common ownership.
Just saying, if you sold one or the other.
Yeah, we would, we would tie them together, do a ninety-nine-year lease on it.
You'd have to do, you'd have to do that. I'm still back on the buddy parking, I, I, I got a lot of odds around that, so.
Understandable.
Also, I'm, I'm thinking, there was a property that, uh, before, that folks wanted to do something like this, was to put the parking in the front, 'cause we didn't have enough room, and we did not allow them to do that. If I remember it right, it was the place by the bank, by Workers' Credit Union. They didn't have enough parking, and they wanted to do it in the front. And, uh, we weren't in.
I remember a lot of other issues with that property, but I, I don't remember that, yeah?
I'm just saying, parking was, was one, one of them, and, you know, they had suggested.
I mean, the code is, is, the, is, for new buildings discourages parking in the front.
Yes, it does.
For new, for new construction, but this is, you know, these are all existing lots that existed prior.
Well, the other question on Washington Street would be, um, uh, how much open space do you have now? Or are you adhering to, 'cause you're putting in, um, another area that's gonna be paved, and are you meeting the open space requirements?
There's still quite a bit of space there, um, there's still.
Fifteen percent or, or so, it depends on what zone it is.
Yeah, I mean, this is the, the plot plan. Um, so the parking would go up front, but there's still quite a bit of space. There's a little bit of parking along the back here for the existing residents, but a lot of this is kind of used as, as green space.
How do you, how many spaces, how many apartments in that building?
There's six apartments in the building.
And how many spaces are there now?
They've got nine.
So they're, they're down by?
No, they're not down, it's, those are existing.
They're existing, um, there's still some, there's some one bedrooms in the unit, in the, in the building, like, and there's a garage that isn't being used by anybody at the, at the property.
That, that was, I mean, to, to Mel's point, that was one reason I asked, what type of parking surfaces are gonna be on, on Washington Street, is it gonna be paved, or is it gonna be a pervious-type surface, or, you know?
I figured paved would be more favorable, but I mean, it'd be cheaper for us to do gravel.
No movement with air at home, huh?
Huh? No, no.
No movement on what?
The butter.
So do you have existing parking over on Washington Street without putting additional?
Yes.
To accommodate the extra three cars that we're talking about?
Without doing the lot, we would, no, I mean, we would, we would be at, um, no, I mean, it would take away from the existing tenants.
You said there's a garage not being used?
There is, we could, we could probably give that to somebody, but we wouldn't be able to do, you know, four to six spaces. Um, we may be able to get a couple out of it, but I mean, I would wanna kind of give residents the building to put more there than just the ones that we're downsizing a little bit. But I mean, if, if we can't do pavement, I mean, we can do, we do gravel, we do a porous surface, like, that'd be fine with us.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I was just kind of, it was kind of, my head was kind of going where Mel was, was asking the question about.
I thought the pavement would be more favorable, but I mean.
It is for, obviously, for maintenance and everything, but where you're only looking for winter, winter season.
I'd be open to it, it would, it would be, it'd be cheaper for us.
You know, put, you know, some kind of pavers down or something like that.
Something, yeah. But even that's an unpurvious section, you don't get your, your green space.
Blocks with the, you know, I don't know, I, um.
Yeah.
But we still got the issue of the curb cut.
Well, the curb cut is something you definitely gotta deal with.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll try to figure that out with the building department.
Because if you, if you need another curb cut, that does create a problem, I believe.
Yeah, he'll be back before us.
Yeah.
I, I do like visiting you guys.
Oh, that's good.
Except this time, except this time, I'd be looking at variance, which is a little more difficult.
Yes, but variance is much harder to get.
All right.
Where does it leave us?
Well, I'd just like to see something addressed on the, the buddy parking, that, that's, that's a real problem for me. 'Cause you're gonna end up with a fistfight there or something.
You've mentioned you have eight tenants in there now. Or eight, eight, eight units leased, how many cars do they have?
Um, I think a couple of them don't have any. Um, and then we give them one for each, I don't think all the spaces are being used, to be honest.
I mean, I drove by there last night, just out of curiosity, there was one car parked in lot one facing out, and I couldn't see any part, any cars parked to the right of it. But it is, and obviously, it doesn't, you, you can't say, "I can only rent an apartment to a person without a car."
No, 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 and that's not.
You can't, that's an unfair restriction on anybody.
No, but I, I do think that we have been surprised that there hasn't been any issues with parking at the, at the property. I mean, I think, I think some people just weren't expecting it.
Well, I wouldn't expect a whole lot of problems until there's a snowstorm, and that's when you're, you're forced off the street.
And then you have to plow it.
That's when it's gonna happen.
Do you know if the, um, the parking deck, the lower level of the parking deck fills up in a snowstorm, do you know?
Which one?
One on, um, West Line Street, the parking deck, the lower level is public parking.
Yes, it does fill up.
It fills up.
The one, the one by the library?
Yes.
Yes, it does, it's, it's an, I know people, and they play interesting games to get that parking during, during the winter.
You mean, like, they put their chair out or something, or reserve a spot or something?
Uh, they, they get there very early. They get there very early in the morning, or it's, it's like they wait outside until someone moves, and then they, they pull in. But, yeah, it's a, it's a premium down there. Yeah.
Wow, it's a shame the city gave up that one behind Priscilla's.
Gave up the what?
The parking lot behind Priscilla's.
Hopefully, the, the new project brings more parking over there, so.
And then you build an elevator up your wall to bring it to your tenant.
But that sounds more expensive.
Agreed.
That wouldn't help me.
Now, you don't wanna put another wall up again and put stairs going up?
No.
All right, what are you, what are your thoughts on that buddy parking, in terms of how you can eliminate that?
I mean, we can, we can, we can put unit, we can put this, the spot number seven back into play. I know people are, are kind of using it now without any issue, and then we can do the buddy parking to one tenant, which is the way that we want to do it. We wanna regrade that and get that one all squared away when we do the other lot, and so it'll be an even parking spot for one.
Is that, is that the one that's number eight? Is that the buddy parking you're talking about, or are you talking about here?
Buddy parking is ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is it, my, yeah, this is revised number four or five here. So, okay, so this is what you're talking?
This is the one I'm talking about, these are gone. So there's no parking allowed here, it's just that issue now.
So if we allowed, yeah, number seven, then, then I would be able to give the buddy parking to one tenant. Every unit would have one space, and then one unit would have two.
I mean, from my perspective, the biggest objection was the ones on the park, on the driveway.
Yeah, well, that's where my, my biggest problem was, until you mentioned that it's not gonna have the same apartment on the buddy parking.
But if he has, goes back to ten, eleven, and seven, hey. Hey, how can we do this? Any thought given to restricting lots five, six, and seven to compact cars only?
Yeah, we can do that, we haven't assigned them yet, um, the compact cars would certainly help.
I mean, obviously, you're going in there with a pickup truck, your, your turning radius is that much larger, you need much more room to maneuver.
I will say that we did, I know, I, I do have a video, we did park two F-150s in lot six and seven, and we did make the turn without crossing any lines, but I, I will say that we did do it very slow. There were two big F-150s, though.
But again, it's not winter.
Hundred-point turn or something.
It wasn't winter, we did do it with snow on the ground.
It was winter.
We did do it with snow on the ground.
So I just see the lines.
We, we cut them in with the, with an ice chipper, it was a pain in the butt. Not a lot of snow, we did it with like two inches on the ground, but we did do it.
It certainly entertained things as long as you go back to the, uh, buddy parking being a single apartment.
Understood.
And I'd be okay with that, but I wouldn't be okay if you break it up.
Okay.
And then what, should we get lot seven?
Bring back lot seven.
For subcon, for a compact car or small?
For compact, yeah.
Compact car, do a, a small sedan, yeah, I can't remember the last type of thing.
Yeah, I'd be all right with that.
With, uh, remote parking for emergency, snow emergency purposes?
Yeah, and as long as it's, there's clear signage and there's enforcement of people not parking on that, that driveway.
Signage, yeah.
Because I'd, I'd hate to see the building commissioner have to do the police work.
Oh, no, 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 absolutely not, no, I mean, we, we take care of that all, properties, especially in the winter, um, we have to a contract. It's not fun, but it's the last day.
I bet it isn't.
Yeah, I still have a concern with kind of wrecking that, that front lawn in order to get the cars there to be paving out in, in front of there.
And I mean, if we're just using it for snow, I mean, we can do gravel, and then that way, it's porous and a little bit more, you know, a little bit more maintenance on our end on a yearly basis, but like, then that way, it's.
Is there a way, um, that, I don't know this property, but the amount of area you have, if you're only looking for three cars, is there a way to put the three cars in there with minimal, uh, impact?
Yeah, I mean, again, we, we were trying to maximize the amount of cars we could put there, just to kind of help satisfy the requirement. But I mean, all we would really need would be eighteen by twenty in order for us to fit three cars.
I mean, the, the maximizing up here gives additional flexibility for the Pine Street property for snow removal purposes.
Yes, it does.
You know, so that's.
And, you know, any approval on our part would have to be predicated, and they can get a curb cut, and they'd have to come in with an acceptable parking plan up on Washington Street.
Yep.
Because you can't approve this and all of a sudden, now you need a variance, which could be.
There's no way of enlarging a existing parking lot on the Washington Street.
Um, we, we can take a look at that, um, but I don't think so. We're fighting, um, we're fighting a hill on the back of that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, don't build another wall.
No, I don't wanna, we're not good at it.
Or if you do, make it in the right spot.
And long enough.
Ouch. What do you wanna do, you wanna look at the Washington Street?
Yes, I would, I, I'd like to see what the, maybe come up with some option of.
We didn't really answer the, go through the, uh, the variance criteria, do we? Probably should do that quickly.
Yeah.
Is it derogated from the tenant ordinance, yeah, it does, obviously, you're here. Is it derogated from the tenant's ordinance? Yeah, it does. Obviously, you're here because you're seeking relief from parking. All right, your related shape topography, soil conditions, your existing one sixty Pine Street, obviously. There is a hardship, some of your own making with the placement of the wall. And, um, is it created a sa- created or aggravated a safety hazard?
It is. Well, the, when we had these cars.
I I think the the situation he's proposing today is 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 better.
It's workable.
It's better.
It is. It's not certainly not ideal, but it's it's better.
I agree.
But the concern now goes back over to Washington Street, making sure that you can do what you think you can do.
Yeah, and I'm 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 pretty sure we can, but I mean, we'll we'll pull everything together prior to the next.
Well, I'm thinking more of a second curb cut. That could be a real problem.
Yeah, I'm concerned with that if they.
Because I'm not sure it's allowed.
Okay.
Well, it it isn't, obviously, because there was one one, uh, case here tonight related to that.
Well, I didn't want to say it. It's not allowed, but you're right. I think it's not allowed.
It just requires another variance.
And that would be difficult to get. But you would think you you should be able to get access to that off your current driveway, I would hope.
We might be able to, yeah.
All right, so do you want to site visit then? Well, let me ask, does anybody in the audience have any questions for or against this application? There's two, two, two folks here left. No? No. Um, site visit next Tuesday like we're doing the rest of them?
Well, we can try to fit it in. I mean, because maybe we can do.
Why do six o'clock?
Well, we could do Main Street early because you you said you didn't need to be there. Then we can do.
You do Main Street at six, six thirty, and this was seven?
Yeah.
This will be at seven?
Seven P M? Seven A M?
P M.
P M. Okay.
That's the twenty-third.
Yes.
I'll be in town anyways.
And we'll meet at Washington Street first and.
Well, that's really the only one we're going to look at.
We're going to, uh, Green Street, six thirty.
Six thirty, Green Street. So seven o'clock, Washington Street. And then maybe six o'clock over at, um, Main Street. That should be a fairly quick visit.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
San Baji?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Good.
All right, so in the meantime, what's the process for the applicant?
I think if, um, kind, we're going to continue the hearing to June, but if you can on Washington Street kind of delineate out where you're thinking of.
Pull market. I'll probably submit a a permit and see what happens.
Yeah, I'd have a couple of plans, one with a curb, another curb cut and another one if you there's none.
Yeah, I'll I'll submit a permit and see and see what happens.
See what options you have.
Yep.
Six thirty.
Six thirty is Green Street.
Green Street. Green Street is six thirty.
We're going to move, uh, Main Street to six o'clock.
Six o'clock for Main Street.
So next Tuesday, seven o'clock.
Next Tuesday, seven o'clock? Okay.
Twenty-third, seven o'clock, Washington Street.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Well, I'll motion to continue to June.
So moved.
Second.
Was a fair, hi. Um, June, June twentieth, I think I said, right?
I think so, yeah.
It is June twentieth. So this is.
June the twentieth. Thank you, Mr. Abachi.
Thank you.
So here's the list.
All right. Should we take a brief recess and get Ray back in here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the zoning board meeting. Uh, I will assume chair again, Randy will move back with our member. And the only thing, we have some correspondents came in from Thai and Bond on May ninth, two thousand twenty through twenty-three. It was addressed to Mayor Michael Nicholson, ninety-five Pleasant Street, Room one twenty-five, Gardner, Mass. As public notification of an A U L, which is an activity use limitation, first made printing and converting a hundred Fred- Fred- Fredette Street, Gardner, Mass, Mass Department, R T N two dash two one six oh seven. It's just a notification that there's going to be an A U L assigned to this property, and they're just notifying the city. And they modify the Health Department, Building Department, Zoning Board. Uh, it really does not play. It's more of a notification. It only comes into play for the zoning board if there is some activity or proposed use at that location. And that's just telling you that there's certain things they cannot do on that property due to some level of contamination. So it's just more of a F Y I.
Make a motion. We place it on file in the one hundred Fredette Street file, which is behind here someplace.
Okay. Any further business before the board?
In the property folder. Put it into the property folder for hundred.
Any further business?
None.
None. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.